Well, good evening, how is everyone? Well, I heard one, great. I heard a clap and an applaud, so maybe I'll try again. Good evening, how is everyone? Great. Alright, a few more, a few more claps and applause. Thank you very much for coming out. I'm Jim Whipke, I'm your superintendent, or some of the kids might know me as that dude who can call off snow days, right? I get that a lot right around now. I never thought I'd have to call off a snow day at November fifteenth, though. Uh, I think that's a, that's a record. Uh, and I don't know if it's a sign of the times for this school year or not. We'll have to wait and see how winter plays out. But it's bitter cold outside, I really appreciate you all taking the time to be here. This is really one of my favorite nights of the year. Uh, you know, when I first came into this district, it was, it was obvious, the outstanding students that we have. And to take time away from our busy schedules, the rat race of our evening events that we're trying to hustle our kids to, and to really take a moment just to honor them. Uh, you know, we've been talking for quite some time in this district about our mantra and our, and our slogan, and just words to live by. As I looked through this program, those words to live by really jumped out at me. I think these kids can teach us all a lesson. Uh, you know, they took basically, you know, some, some ordinary things, everyday events, like, like cross-country. Our cross-country boys from Antonia Elementary are behind, behind the screens, but you know, an ordinary thing like running and perfected it to their best. Uh, and really made it extraordinary. Um, to take ordinary things and make them extraordinary, we've got a group of kids that are doing that. And they do it because they love what they do, alright? They have a staff that loves them, alright? And that serves them well. And they care. You know, you can't underestimate care. I was telling a couple of folks before I walked in here, that, uh, you know, I was at a, a, a workshop the other day that other St. Louis area superintendents were at. And they had, um, industry, professionals from different industries. So tech industry was there, and they, and the health industry was there, and medical industry. And they said, you know what we really, what we really need kids to have, what skills we really need them to have, might surprise you as a superintendent. You know, we get so lost in making sure that, that, that map score is where it needs to be, and, and, and that, 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 that EOC is where it needs to be. And these, these folks high up in, you know, United Healthcare was there, and, and she was the first person to speak, and she said, you know what we really need? Soft skills. We need kids to show up on time. We need kids that say please and thank you. We need, we need, we need kids that have grit and determination. I will tell you that these kids that are gonna be recognized tonight are some of the best of the best in that area. They have the soft skills to make it. The, the industries were basically saying that when we get them, if they have those skills, and they can communicate with each other, we can make them successful. We've got a lot of successful individuals here, here tonight. I mean, I, I, shoot, we have Eagle Scouts that are here. I mean, I think that's worth applause, right? I mean, you know what it takes to be an Eagle Scout? That's not an easy task! Too, too tough for, I wish I could say I was an Eagle Scout, too tough for me, right? You know, you have some, some athletes that are just all-stars, and, and really good, kind people. Megan McCorkle. You got, you got Cole Elwood. Uh, you've got, you've got our, our National Merit student that's here, and, and Kendall Presley. We've got really the best of the best that walk across the stage. And here, here, here's the, the bottom line, being a parent of four myself, they don't walk across the stage on their own. I wanna personally thank you, as superintendent of the school district, for the jobs that you have done as parents, as grandparents, aunts, uncles, friends, neighbors, to make sure that kids are supported, and kids are loved, and they're cared about. It's absolutely an honor for me to stand in front of you. So here's what we do on, on the, and this is the first time that we've done it here at Rickman. And the reason we have to move it to Rickman is because we've outgrown the service center, which is also a pretty good problem to have, when you're recognizing our outstanding kids. So here, here's, we'll do things just a little bit different than we've done in the past, right? In the, in the past, we've been allowed to, at the service center, just have you guys exit out. But it's really important for me, and I think it's important for everybody, to be recognized, even those kids that are recognized at the very end. So what we're gonna ask that happens is when, when the kids walk across the stage, we give them a pin. The pin, uh, basically says, "Reaching for Success." That's a, that's a pin that I've had for quite some time, uh, and it's, you're reaching for that star, and this is just one little leg, uh, in the rung on the ladder of climbing up to, to reach that star. But we'd like to give them at least a little something, uh, for, for recognition. They'll walk across, they'll get an opportunity to shake my hand, we have our Board of Education that's down here. Uh, everybody's here except for Don Mullins, our board president couldn't be here tonight, uh, but we have our outstanding board. They will be taking turns coming up here for us, uh, and shaking the hands of our, our wonderful students. After they walk across the stage, they're just gonna be filtered right back into the seats that they originated from. We've got about, uh, a hundred and, a hundred and ten kids that we're gonna recognize tonight, which also I think is great. Uh, we're probably looking at about fifty minutes, because we have a board meeting after this, and I don't wanna be late, because my bosses are all here. So that would not be good if we're, if we're late. So with, without further ado, uh, we are going to first start off, and I believe it is with Dr. Townsley. Is Dr. Townsley here? Oh, we're starting with Antonia first, alright. Um, changing on the fly here, alright. Antonia Elementary and their principal, Mr. Radonovich, is gonna come out and take my place at the podium. That is our next superstar, she's gonna be in the choir, right?
Alright, so thank you, Dr. Whipke, I'm Mark Radonovich, as he said, the principal of Antonia Elementary School. And I am here tonight to recognize these strong, fearless athletes from Antonia Elementary and Antonia Middle School. Many of our kids participate in the JCYA Cross-Country Program, and this year, we have a group of fourth through sixth grade boys who placed first at the championship meet at the end of the season. I know these kids are strong, because I see them practice at Antonia. Uh, I'll, I'll go out right after school, and they're out there running, and what seems like hours later, I'll come out to go home, bags packed, and they're still running. Um, and they're running with smiles on their faces, and they're cheering, and, and I know they have a good time. So I first wanna thank their coaches, I know several of their coaches are here this evening. If you'll just kinda stand up, Brittany Foder, Kelly Ross Boone, and Mike Nobby, thank you for working with our kids this year. Thanks for making this a fun season for them. Um, all of our fourth and fifth graders obviously go to Antonia Elementary School, but all of these sixth graders that are part of this team, I had the privilege of working with them as well at the elementary, because all of them attended Antonia as well. So I am going to just say their names, and when I say your name, guys, if you'll just give a wave and step forward, we'll just go right down the line, ready? We have Gabe Arts. We have Brandon Foder. We have Jackson Garnett. Tate Gonzalez. Boyer Hart. Dylan Heckstetter. Ethan Hemmy. Brayden Holden Reed. Trent Huck. Aiden Rebseman. Ryan Reader. Aiden Ross Boone. Brayden Schaefer. And Liam West. And then not to forget our two on the end, we had two second graders place first individually at the cross-country meet in the first through third grade division. So that's quite an accomplishment for a second grader to place first at those meets. So first, we have Easton Schlimmer. Easton, just kinda wave hi there. And the only girl representing, she's waited all the way till the end, she would tell you we saved the best for last, Violet Hart. And I know it's kinda dark out there, but if our Antonia parents could just stand up and be recognized, so we can thank you for, uh, your wonderful kids and your support this year. Who'd I forget? Oh, Sebastian, you snuck in on me! Did you just show up? Okay. I was gonna say, Sebastian wasn't back there with us when we lined up, so Sebastian Smith, there you go, Sebastian. Yeah, snuck in, he snuck in on me, that's alright. Alright, so before we exit, I'm going to introduce our next presenter, who is Katie Collins from Hammrick Elementary.
Congratulations, Antonia Cross-Country Team. Great job, guys. I also have our Cross-Country Team from Clyde Hammrick here, our fourth through sixth grade girls' team, who I am incredibly proud of for their hard work, their dedication, and their self-motivation. They finished first place at their second meet, which was one and a half mile run. When I, I'm gonna share their times with you, because I'm incredibly impressed, impressed by this, and had the opportunity to practice with them several nights a week, so I saw how much work they put into their success. Emma Fitzgerald, she finished twelve minutes and twenty-three seconds. Abby Fitzgerald, eleven minutes and twenty-five seconds. Zoe Thomas, eleven minutes and thirty seconds. And Vivian Bagaski, eleven minutes and twenty-one seconds. Thank you, guys, so much for coming and for allowing us the opportunity to celebrate these students' great accomplishments. Not me! Thank you!
Alright, we have, I'm trying to look here, Janine, are you next? Alright, Janine Hutter with Rockport, come on down.
Good evening, thank you all for coming tonight. I have two students that I would like to recognize. Um, the first student I'd like to recognize is Danny Bommer. Danny, can you please step forward? Danny raised over a thousand dollars for our playground fundraiser, so I'd like to give Danny a huge round of applause. And also, if his mother could please stand. If Danny's mother could please stand to be recognized, he couldn't do this without her support, so thank you. The next gentleman is obviously not an elementary child, um, at Rockport. However, I did have the privilege of watching him grow up from kindergarten all the way through sixth grade at Rockport Heights Elementary, and he's now, um, a senior at Fox High School. And he completed his Eagle Scout project for us, and it was a major contribution to our building, so I'd like for Jeffrey Keller to be recognized for completing his Eagle Scout project at his homeschool element, Rockport Heights Elementary. And also, if I could have Jeffrey's parents please stand up to be recognized for their support of Jeffrey through this process. Can't see out there. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Keller. Um, I'm gonna turn the podium over now to Mr. Dan Baker, from Sacramento Elementary.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Sacramento Elementary would like to, um, recognize Jacob McFerrin. Jacob is being recognized because the work he did in, uh, for rebuilding our outdoor classroom this past summer and fall. He's a Sacramento Middle Eighth Grade student, but a former student of the elementary school, and for the work that he did for our outdoor classroom, that is why he's being recognized by Sacramento Elementary. Um, the purpose of the project, Jacob mentioned that he wanted to make sure that it was a useful, functional outdoor classroom, because over time, Mr. Mahan, who is a former teacher at Sacramento Elementary many, many years ago, a lot of brush, poison ivy, uh, had overgrown the outdoor classroom, the wooden tables and podiums were no longer, uh, functional. So Jacob took it upon himself to do some research, and spent, I believe, over four hundred plus hours of his own time getting the, um, project going, organized. He had about twenty-plus people that he directed to help make the, uh, project actually get going. It was a lot of work, he did a lot of, uh, planning, um, presented to me numerous times, a director of maintenance was involved. Um, if you're ever in the area, and maybe exercising down on the Sacramento campus, take a look, go back through the woods, he, uh, broadened the pathways to get back there. He reutilized the, uh, podium, the benches, so that all the students and the teachers at Sacramento Elementary could go down on the warmer days, and, uh, really participate in hands-on activities. So I wanna thank Jacob for all his hard work. Um, he, in addition to just the manual labor and organizing the project, he, uh, he put together classroom kits for each grade level. So part of the kits had clipboards, magnifying glasses, tape measures, a whole bunch of things that they can take down there with them to use. So he's a natural leader. If you ever have a chance to talk to Jacob, his communication skills are second to none, even as a fourteen-year-old. Um, he, he gets people to work, and I appreciate everything that you do. I wanna, um, not only recognize him, but the parents, I believe Stephen and Jennifer, mom and dad are out there, so if you could please stand and be recognized. I think his future goal is to be an engineer, I think a computer engineer, and all the skills that he showed and displayed on, um, our behalf, there's no reason to think that won't be, uh, be reached. So again, as part of Sacramento Elementary staff and students, thank you for all your work. And as a result of his project, he did earn his Eagle rank on October twenty-fifth, so congrats again. And Mr. Metz from Antonia Middle is up next.
Matt Metz with AMS.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Whipke. Uh, the first group I'd like to recognize here at AMS is our Boys Cross-Country Team. Boys, if you can just take a step forward. Um, the Boys Cross-Country Team had an outstanding season. Uh, these young men start in early August, and wrapped up the season in mid-October. Uh, training four days a week through, uh, extreme heat to bitter cold. Uh, they had a great finish this year, earning the title of District Team Champions, in which every single one of these young men medaled in the competition. So congratulations, boys. And the students are Dennis Patraschen, Brady Gossett, Benjamin Nobby, Matthew Harp, Josiah Maxwell, and Caleb Radonovich. And by the way, Caleb Radonovich is the individual district champion as well, so congratulations to him. Alright, the next, uh, two folks I'd like to recognize is our Special Olympic Bowling Team. Um, that is Caitlin Strange and Mercedes Beers Johnson. So these, uh, these two students, along with a few others, um, they had the honor of participating in the Jefferson County Special Olympics Bowling Tournament. Uh, we totaled four first-place medals and one top-four finisher. Um, but beyond performance, I, I just really wanna celebrate their sportsmanship and character during this whole tournament. Um, there's no questions that we are proud of that group right there, and we are definitely privileged to have them represent AMS. So the next two students I'd like to recognize are two members of our Character Council. Um, our Character Council students are a group of students who represent true leadership in and out of the classroom. The leadership group is responsible for nearly all events that occur at AMS. So in other words, if, if something is going on at AMS, more than likely, the council kids have something to do with it. We're a very student-led building, and these kids are what makes our, our building student-led, they're, they're phenomenal. Um, tonight, I wanna recognize two of them, uh, the first one being Autumn Karsh, and the second one, oh, sure, yeah, yeah. And the second one, Olivia Beck. As far as communication goes with our events within the building, these two are pretty much responsible for it, and I can't tell you the endless amount of time and hours that these two, uh, put in to make sure our council runs smooth. So thank you, girls, I appreciate you. Next person I'd like to, uh, recognize is, um, Ethan Renteria. Ethan Renteria was selected by our, selected to audition to participate in the two thousand eighteen East Central All-District Junior High School Band. He was one of over four hundred students across the district to audition. He, uh, he, the audition process included the scales, etudes, and sight reading, and we're extremely proud of Ethan. Thank you, Ethan. And finally, I'd like to recognize Madison Beck. Madison Beck is the current Miss Missouri Junior High School America. Uh, she competed for this title at the beginning of October against other girls in our state. Um, she scored high in all the, um, the, 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 in the competition, with the interviews. Um, she scored higher than some of the high school, or all of the high school and all the collegiate, um, entries as well. So she was the highest-scoring individual in this whole, this whole, uh, competition. She's been working very hard at promoting the Pageant's National Platform, which is BRAVE, B-R-A-V-E, which stands for Building Respect and Values in Everyone. She's been going to classrooms and speaking to students. Um, as if that's not enough, uh, Madison had begun to speak to other groups, um, within the community with her self-created platform called the Madison Project. She'll be representing Antonia Middle School in the state of Missouri this summer, in Little Rock, Arkansas, against girls from all over the United States in the national competition, so good luck to you. Parents of these students, could you please stand and be recognized? That's awesome. Okay, next up is, uh, Fox Middle School, Dr. Jackson.
Good evening. I am so excited to be with you this evening and recognize all of our student leaders for all the wonderful things that they do for us at Fox Middle School. Also have our student sponsors up here as well, so when the time comes, we will be recognizing them as well. I would first like to start with our Character Council students. This is a group of key leaders in our school who are 8th graders, and this group designs and teaches our character education lessons to other students in the school, as well as plans many other student-driven initiatives at our school. You can always see them in the hallways, always throughout the school, doing all kinds of different things for all the wonderful events that we host at Fox Middle. So I would first like to recognize Lily Pickens, Jordan Francis, Larissa Salazar Rosas, and Brooke Harrison. And then I can't say enough about this wonderful teacher that we have, Mrs. Whitney. She is their sponsor for Character Council. She, along with the students, spends an incredible amount of time working with these kiddos to organize them and teach them all the great things that they leave for us in our school. So thank you very much. Our next group is our SWEET Leadership Class, and SWEET also stands for Student Wellness, Education, and Empowerment Team. We are very fortunate to have a group of students who designs and creates videos that coordinate with the character education lessons that our Character Council students teach to the rest of the students in the school. So I want to recognize them for their leadership. Also 8th graders, first up Lexi Salaman, Kaylee Iverson, Ava Jobst, and Adele Hayes. And they are led by the Fox Middle School Teacher of the Year and District Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Eva Rudolph. Our next group of students, I have to tell you, one of my absolute favorite things, and I tell Mr. Schreuer this all the time, I love to go in and listen to the band play. If you're ever having just kind of a melancholy kind of day, go in and listen to the band, watch Mr. Schreuer, Mr. Harms with the students, and watch the students interact with them. And they are a tremendous group of students to watch, and so incredibly talented. So I want to first recognize our All-District Band members that we would start with, Emma Naumann, Katherine Breckenfelder, Dakota Irvin. And I also want to recognize Dante Plant, but I don't believe he's here, Audrey Spingeman, Cameron Werdell. And I also want to recognize Maya Goodman for All-District Band, but she also stay standing just a little bit longer, give us one more wave, Maya, because she was also All-District Jazz Band, so congratulations. And I would love for Mr. Schreuer to give us a wave, and for Mr. Harms to give us a wave. These are their band teachers. And then I also would like to introduce Mrs. Eva Rudolph. She just won the Emerson Excellence in Teaching Award. And just to kind of tell you a little bit about this program, Emerson annually recognizes more than 100 educators in the St. Louis metropolitan area, from kindergarten teachers to college professors, who are examples of excellence in their field. And Mrs. Rudolph is now part of an elite group of educators recognized for her teaching practices. So if she would step out for us one more time, Mrs. Eva Rudolph. And I have to say, Mrs. Rudolph, it is truly a pleasure to work with someone who spends as much time as she does prepping classes. She's there at all hours of the day and night with our students, and just doing everything that she can to provide the most creative lessons for our students. But the thing that I think is the most special about her is her heart for our kids. And she is truly, along with all the other educators that we have up here, so talented and so supportive of our students. But again, I want to recognize Mrs. Rudolph for all of her efforts and being named at Emerson Excellence in Teaching Award winner. And then I would love for all of our parents of all of these students to stand so that we can recognize you as well. Thank you so much. And I would love to introduce next up, Mrs. Jamie Cavato from Ridgewood Middle School. Thank you so much.
All right. Well, I am so excited to recognize our students tonight. As many of you know, Ridgewood Middle School, we stand for leadership and character, and like Dr. Whipke mentioned earlier, grit. And these students up here on stage are a true definition of leadership, grit, and character, and I could not be more proud of the students who are coming out of Ridgewood Middle School, because I know they'll be outstanding high school students, and then I know that they will be outstanding members of our community once they grow up and leave the secondary schools and go on to post-secondary. So our first group we'd like to recognize tonight is Character Council. So if you guys, if council could step forward, I'm going to talk to you a little bit about what they do at Ridgewood Middle School. These students have dedicated two years of their services during the school day to perform council duties. Our students are expected to be leaders of the school by showing and promoting good character at all times. We expect council students to grow into good citizens by creating and teaching lessons based on character education and sharing those with our entire student body. They also help raise school spirit by planning activities such as mixers, dances, and school assemblies. Community service is a big part of their duties as well, as they plan for community fundraisers and food collections, and also plan out appreciation days for our staff. Council students spend countless time out of their regular school day, outside of school, volunteering their time at our book fairs, helping out with activities at our feeder elementary schools, attending leadership workshops, decorating, and preparing for any dances or mixers that we have. I am extremely proud of their dedication and commitment to Ridgewood Middle School and the Fox C6 School District. They carry out each mission with a sense of leadership, pride, and enthusiasm. I would like the following students to just give a wave whenever I call out your name. Colton Bush, Emily Hanks, Sophia Geisher, Jacob Schellebarger, Addison Steely, Abigail Stengel, Zachary Vickers, and Brynlee Willenbrock. And of course, one of their awesome leader teachers, Ms. Sarah Brown. She is outstanding and runs this group of kids every day. Our next group of students that I would like to recognize is students who made All-District Concert Band and Jazz Band under the direction of Mr. Zach Thomas and Mr. Steve Harms. I am extremely proud of our band program. Once again, outstanding leaders. The kids have such determination and pride in what they do, just like Dr. Jackson talked about. I love going down there and observing their classes, because every day, something's going on in band. And it's always just hard work and a good job, and they always love to perform. That's what I love about their class. In late October, 400 middle school band students from over 25 different middle schools auditioned to be a part of an All-District Concert Band and All-District Jazz Band. I am proud to say Ridgewood had five students make the Concert Band and seven students make the Jazz Band. So the students who made Concert, or Jazz Band, or even both are as follows. Gavin Gajar, Eller Calcom, Matty Hart, Preston Jones, Shepherd Kreps, Audra Magnus, Kyle McLean, and Robert Vescovo. Congratulations. And last but not least is our Impact Class. This is a Boys Leadership Class at Ridgewood Middle School that we started probably, I would say about 15 years ago, whenever I was an assistant principal at Ridgewood. And it is a class that we select boys every semester to be a part of, not just learning about how to be leaders, but also giving them responsibilities in our school to carry out our mission and vision and our goals. And I am proud to say that Mr. Greg Lemon, new staff member to Ridgewood this year, I do have a little story to share about Greg real quick. We hired him, and I was so excited for him to come to work at Ridgewood, because he's such a dynamic teacher. And then I also sat him down and said, hey, by the way, you're going to teach a Boys Leadership Class. And he jumped right on board and was so excited with all his ideas, and the kids have just flourished in his class, so I wanted to thank him for taking the lead with that class as well. So Impact Leadership Class, their focus this year has been around building leaders that make a difference in our community. The group of boys has helped spread growth mindset messages to students with bracelets. They raised over $400 to shop for families in need of extra help during the holidays, and started collecting canned goods and essential items that can help prevent students from going hungry on a daily basis. Strong leaders are being created, and their impact on others has just started. I am so proud to recognize these gentlemen tonight. Mr. Leo Ray, Mr. Gavin Bennett, Mr. Ethan Vogue, and Mr. Harley Winchell. And last but not least, like Dr. Whipke, I'm going to echo what he said. Parents, could you please stand, because without awesome parenting from grandparents, aunts, uncles, neighbors, these kids wouldn't be standing up here. So thank you for the good job that you do as well. And at this time, I would love to introduce my colleague, Dr. Tammy Cardona, Principal of Sacramento Middle School.
Good evening, parents, school board. I am very excited, along with Mr. Peterson, to be here tonight to recognize these students from Sacramento Middle School. We actually have three different groups we're going to recognize, and I'm actually going to start with our Character Council students. As the other middle school principals told you earlier, our Character Council is kind of like the high school student council, so they run everything in our building. If you are there for a dance, if you see a project going on, if you see challenges going on between advisories, that is coming directly from our Character Council students. So first, I would like to recognize Aiden Hunter. Aiden leads our Team Challenge Committee, and so he's the one that when different advisories have challenges against each other and they earn points, he's the one that helps coordinate all that. So thank you, Aiden. Next, I would like to recognize Carter Phillips. Carter is in charge of our Lessons Committee. So our Character Council actually goes into every advisory and teaches different character lessons, and so he's the one that coordinates that, makes sure that that's happening, and so we appreciate what you do, Carter. Thank you. Elizabeth Conder. Elizabeth puts together all the advertising, what's going on, what's happening next, so that everybody can stay informed. We appreciate what you do, Elizabeth. Gretchen Volker. She's in charge of school climate, so that is a big task. What's going on? What can we do to improve what's going on at Sacramento Middle School? She coordinates all that, oversees that committee, and we appreciate everything that you do. Elena Bus. She oversees the Dance Committee. She gets the fun stuff, everything the kids like to come to. And next, I would like to recognize Nate Salzman. Nate oversees our JAGCAST. So we do put out a JAGCAST, which is a video student announcement system that goes out to the students, and he kind of makes sure that's coordinated and they're meeting their deadlines, and that gets out to all the classes. So thank you for your work on that, Nate. We appreciate that. And then finally, I would like to recognize Sarah Tyler. Sarah, she oversees the Service Learning Committee. So anytime our students get together to see what can they do to help support our community, or they see a need in the community, she's the one that kind of coordinates that, makes sure everybody knows what's going on and that things are getting done, and so we appreciate what you do, Sarah. Thank you. Our next group of students I'm recognizing is from our Life PE class. So at Sacramento Middle School, we have a special needs classroom with physically impaired students, and they range in all different abilities and disabilities, and we have some in wheelchairs. And so these students that I'm getting ready to recognize, they give up their PE hour, and they actually spend their PE time in the PE class with these students, and they are the ones that help these students move. And if you ever have a chance to come in fourth hour, which is like 9:45-ish, and see what takes place in this classroom, it will bring tears to your eyes. And the important thing is that these students, this doesn't end when fourth hour ends. You will see them bumping fists with these students in the hallway. You will see them eating lunch with them during lunch. You will see them going over and just talking with them. And so those relationships is not just about PE, but the care that you give these students is so important, and I want to make sure that we recognize you. First, Austin Bullock. Cassidy Chapman. Hannah Eskew. Elena Fiala. Kenzie Fuliam. Chloe Jacob. Chloe Lewis. Addison Lynch. Madison Meyer. Mara Nicholas. Regina Perez-Anna. Reina Reynolds. And Samantha Wagner. Now, I do have to say that our students apply to be part of this class, and we had to turn away 30-plus students this semester, because there just wasn't enough room for them, and that just shows you the love, service, and care that our students exhibit every day, and we are so proud of what you do. Thank you. And we are going to end Sacramento Middle School's recognition with our All-District Band members. As we know, everybody has special places in their heart for music, and we all listen to different kinds of music. And as Dr. Jackson said, if you ever have a day where you just need a little pick-me-up, walking into the band room and listening to what's going on in there and the work they put in is just tremendous, and it can really turn your day around. So I'm going to recognize these following students for... So, I'm going to recognize these following students for making the All District Band. Josh Galler. Shay Williams. And Curtis Schmidt. And could I have the parents of all these outstanding students please stand to be recognized? Thank you, students. And as we leave the stage, I do just want to give a shout-out to Jacob McFerrin, the Sekman Middle School student with, he is an awesome student, and I'm glad that I was able to share him with Sekman Elementary School, because he's great. And I would now like to introduce to you our next presenter, which is Dr. Sherp from Fox High School.
Good evening, sir. How are you?
Great to see you.
Good to see you. Wow, you can't see anything up here. Good evening. How's everybody doing tonight? Hope you're doing well. I feel like every time I come here, I say the same thing, that I can't imagine bringing a better group than what I'm bringing tonight. But I honestly, absolutely mean that, that this group of students is really, truly outstanding. I'm going to let them kind of get situated as Dr. Whipke continues to hand out their pins. Lot of seniors in this group, and this is the senior, this is the class that I came in with to the high school. So, my heart is filled tonight with a lot of gratitude, because I've kind of watched these kids go. We've had the same growing process. So, it's been really, really amazing to watch these kids grow for the last four years, most of them. And I'm going to miss this group a lot. So, we'll start off tonight talking a little football. We had an awesome football year this year. We went nine and two, got lost at Jackson, was a super football game. But I have two of the best players we've ever had at Fox Senior High School with us tonight, Cole Elwood and Bobby Nybert. Cole Elwood is the all-time Fox High School interception leader. That's almost 60 years of football. And Bobby Nybert has set the all-time school rushing record. 60 years of football, that's pretty impressive, guys. Way to go. Next up, I would like to recognize our state qualifying girls golf team. And this was the first time Fox High sent a team to state with either girls or boys. And the girls were absolutely amazing. I went and watched the state championship. It's one of the coolest things I've ever seen, definitely as a principal. You want to talk about feeling less-than, watching these girls shoot like near-perfect score golf and knowing that you're the biggest hacker known to mankind really hurt at times. But it was amazing watching these girls play and compete. Mason Young, Sidney Young, and Annika Sprecker are here tonight. Amelia Chapman and Siri Pekanen are playing basketball. And Cassie Buchanan was not able to attend, but girls stepped forward. And I also have their coach with us here, Mr. Boyd. Congratulations. Great job. It was really cool to watch. Next person I'd like to recognize is Gabrielle Isaacson. Gabby won our talent show. And I will tell you that I've seen almost every production that Ms. Hill has put together, and the quality of talent that they have at these shows are absolutely unbelievable. Gabby sings like an angel, so anyways, I just would like to recognize her. And if you get a chance to attend one of our talent shows, Fox Idol's coming up, it's really worth your time. It's an amazing night, great night. So, anyways, congratulations to you, Grab. Next up is RJ McKay. This is not RJ's first time to the stage. I could probably have RJ here just about every time we have one of these recognitions. The kid's amazing. Perfect 36 on his ACT. Yeah, that deserves an amazing clap. Just a couple points higher than I got. Couple, 12, 13, 15? Who's counting? He's also in the running still to be a finalist for national merit, which is like absolutely amazing. And quite honestly, I think he's probably going to get it. We have not gotten final confirmation of that. But he is still in the running, and my guess is he's probably going to nail that down really, really soon. So, RJ, way to go, kiddo. Next, we have Ian Hufford. Ian is an Eagle Stout recipient. Step forward there, Ian. His Eagle Stout project, we have engineers that are in envy of. So, we had the FOX at Fox Field for many, many years. And when we did the reconstruction or put in the new track, that was taken out. Ian took it upon himself to bring the FOX back to the field. And I will tell you, he did an unbelievable job. You guys should see it. It's fantastic. You might have seen it on social media. But I don't know how many hours he put into that. A lot. And a lot of time and effort. But I will tell you that that's something that you're going to come back 20 years later and be like, "Wow, I did that." So, way to go, Ian. Thanks so much for that. Really cool. And lastly, we have our three drum majors. Kylie Wheeler, Heidi Olson, and Allison Clement. Step forward. Our drum majors are representing our entire band that won for the second year in a row, the Valhalla Band Festival, which was a festival that had over 20 bands competing, which we came in first place, which is absolutely spectacular. And just to recognize, I couldn't bring the whole band here, but our drum majors are fabulous. They do an outstanding job. And I would like to say thank you to the band directors that are here tonight for all the hard work that they've done to help our band get ready. And lastly, I would like to thank all of our outstanding parents. If you're here, please stand and let us thank you. Let me thank you that I get to work with such great kids. What a great job. Next up, Mr. Todd Scott from Sekman High School.
Good evening, everyone. As one of the high school principals, it's so exciting to see some of the outstanding students and individuals we have coming up from our feeder schools, but also coming up from across the district. So, congratulations to all of our students who were recognized tonight. On our stage tonight, we have two of our very best and brightest. We talk about tradition and outstanding athletes at Sekman High School, and we've got two of our best here tonight. First off, I'd like to introduce Claire Sullivan, who has finished third at the state golf tournament this year. This is Claire's third time onstage for this award. She's finished it in the top of state three times in a row. She told me tonight she's going to be back next year, so we're going to get that first place again next year. So, congratulations, Claire. And also continuing on in an outstanding tradition of softball players down at Sekman High School, I'd like to introduce Megan McCorkle. Megan was a first-team All-State selection at third base. She's going to be attending probably the best university in the state of Missouri, and that is Missouri State University. Go Bears. So, we're really proud of Megan and her season this year. And once again, congratulations to both of you. Thank you very much. Dr. Whipke's back up.
Well, you can see why we're so proud here in the Fox School District. I want to thank our staff for being here as well. We've talked a lot about parents. I haven't talked a whole bunch about our staff. Our staff here is really second to none. They serve our kids very, very well. And I think you could see that in their heart, and their passion, and their desire, and what they talked about. Do you have something else?
Will, Megan's parents and Claire's parents, please stand up. I forgot to recognize you guys. Thank you very much for all of your time and energy and effort. Thank you.
So, I just wanted to give a little shout-out to our amazing staff that cares deeply about our students and their success. It takes a village, and you guys all have heard that before, but it does. It takes a village of people to love and care for our young ones. And I think we're doing a pretty darn good job in this community. I want to thank you for being here. I told you guys we would be right on time, and let's see how close I was. Well, I'm on Jim Whipke time. I'm five minutes late, so I apologize for that. Alright, I want to thank you again. Thanks for being here. It means a lot to the kids, but it means a lot to us as well in Fox School District. So, thank you very much.